Mesa City Council Meeting for July the 10th. We excuse Councilmember Winkle and also Councilmember Thompson. I should note that our thoughts and prayers are with Mr. Thompson and his family. He lost his father this last weekend, so I would invite you to reach out and express your condolences to Mr. Thompson. We will begin our meeting with an invocation offered by Pastor Jason Anderson from the Living Word Bible Church. Following the opening prayer, we invite Cub Scout Dagan Barker from PAC 857 to come forward and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Pastor, please stand for the prayer and pledge.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmembers, civil servants. We appreciate the invitation and opportunity to pray. Father God, we come before you for wisdom and success and favor. Wisdom for tonight's meeting, that you said that whoever needs wisdom can ask for it and that you give it without finding fault. Thank you, Lord, for success, that whatever your civil servants put their hands to is finding success, it's producing with what their hands touch. We thank you for favor with the community, with each other, that there might be unity in our city. I thank you, Lord, for peace for Mr. Thompson and what he and his family are going through. Amen.
Amen. Thank you.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor Anderson, and thank you, Dagan, for helping us get the meeting off to a great start. The first item on our agenda is to consider the consent agenda. We invite Mr. Kevin Christopher forward to read the consent agenda. Mr. Christopher, I should probably note that we do have a request to speak on item 5P, so we'll pull that from the consent agenda.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. These are the items on the consent agenda. All items listed with an asterisk will be considered as a group by the City Council and will be enacted with one motion. There will be no separate discussion unless a council member or citizen requests, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered as a separate item. If a citizen wants an item removed, a blue card must be completed and given to the city clerk prior to the council's vote on the consent agenda. Item 2, approval minutes of previous meetings as written. Items 3A through 3C act on liquor license applications for ultimate imaginations, one-day charitable events Friday, September 1st, Friday, October 6th, and Friday, November 3rd for the Downtown Mesa Association from Center Street to Robeson and McDonald from First Street to Pepper Place. Item 3D act on liquor license application for a Legion Air 6308 South Taxiway Circle. Item 3E act on liquor license application for Barbecue House 1955 West Guadalupe Road. Item 3F act on liquor license application for Streets of New York 1959 South Signal Butte Road. Item 4A act on five-year renewal contract for managed print services for citywide departments. Item 4B act on three-year term contract for large print library books for the Library Services Department. Item 4C act on three-year term contract for library books, spoken word, DVDs, and digital media for the Library Services Department. Item 4D act on three-year term contract for library media materials for the Library Services Department. Item 4E act on three-year term contract for commercial printing for the Business Services Department. Item 4F act on contract to purchase emergency medical supplies for the Fire and Medical Department. This purchase is funded by the Arizona Department of Homeland Security. Item 4G act on contract to purchase an interface for computer-aided dispatch and deck and live move-up manager software for the Fire and Medical Department. Item 4H act on three-year term contract for Class 400 gas meters for the Materials and Supply Warehouse for the Energy Resources Department. Item 4I act on dollar limit increase to the three-year term contract for LED roadway fixtures for the Materials and Supply Warehouse for the Transportation Department. Item 4J act on contract for electric line clearance and tree trimming services for the Southwest Quadrant of Mesa's electric service area for the Energy Resources Department. Item 4K act on contract to purchase cabling material and services for the Information Technology Department's expansion into the South Center Street Complex Building 2. Item 4L act on one-year renewal contract for general maintenance services for the Water Resources, Parks, Recreation, and Community Facilities and Information Technology, Communications, and Infrastructure Departments. Item 4M act on contract for the Brown Road Water Treatment Plant Improvements Project Construction Manager at Risk. The project's funded by 2010 and 2014 authorized water bonds. Item 4N act on contract to purchase two new continuous online nutrient analysis systems for the Greenfield Water Reclamation Plant and Southeast Water Reclamation Plant as requested by the Water Resources Department. The Greenfield Water Reclamation Plant's purchase is funded by the joint venture City of Mesa, Town of Gilbert, and Town of Queen Creek based on usage. Item 4O act on contract for utility quarter-section improvements at Main Street and Power Road and at Broadway Road and Crisman Road. Funding's available from the 2014 authorized water and wastewater bonds. Item 4P act on contract for safety improvements at the railroad crossing on Alma School Road. Funding's available from the local street's sales tax. Most of the funding will be reimbursed from a federal grant administered through ADOT. Item 5A act on resolution approving the fiscal year 2017-2018 Annual Action Plan for Submittal to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development and authorizing the city manager to amend, sign, and submit the annual action plan. Item 5B act on resolution approving and authorizing the city manager to prepare, sign, and submit applications to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development to receive fiscal year 2017-2018 entitlement funds under the Housing and Community Development Act of 1974, or CDBG, as amended for city department activities approved by the City Council. Item 5C act on resolution approving and authorizing the city manager to prepare, sign, and submit the applications to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development to receive fiscal year 2017-2018 entitlement funds under the Housing and Community Development Act of 1974, as amended for nonprofit organization activities approved by the City Council. Item 5D act on resolution approving and authorizing the city manager to prepare, sign, and submit applications to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development to receive fiscal year 2017-2018 entitlement funds under the Housing and Community Development Act of 1974's amendment, as amended to fund for-profit organization activities approved by the City Council. Item 5E act on resolution approving and authorizing the city manager to prepare, sign, and submit applications to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development to receive fiscal year 2017-2018 entitlement funds under the Stewart B. McKinney Homeless Assistance Act of 1987, or ESG, as amended for activities approved by the City Council. Item 5F act on resolution approving and authorizing the city manager to prepare, sign, and submit applications to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development to receive fiscal year 2017-2018 entitlement funds under the Home Investment Partnerships Program, as amended for city department activities approved by the City Council. Item 5G act on resolution approving and authorizing the city manager to prepare, sign, and submit applications to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development to receive fiscal year 2017-2018 entitlement funds under the Home Investment Partnership Program, as amended for nonprofit organization activities approved by the City Council. Item 5H act on resolution approving and authorizing the city manager to prepare, sign, and submit applications to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development to receive fiscal year 2017-2018 entitlement funds under the Home Investment Partnerships Program, as amended to fund for-profit organization activities approved by the City Council. Item 5I act on resolution approving and authorizing the city manager to enter into an airport improvement program grant agreement with the FAA for the design and construction of runway and taxiway lighting and signage at Falcon Field Airport. The FAA will pay more than 91% of the cost. Funding for remaining costs is the city's responsibility. The city will seek to obtain a matching grant from ADOT. If obtained, the city will pay the remaining amount from the Falcon Field Airport Enterprise Fund. Item 5J act on resolution approving and authorizing the city manager to enter into a grant agreement with the FAA for a new airport master plan at Falcon Field Airport to replace the existing airport master plan. The FAA will pay more than 91% of the cost. Funding for the remaining cost is the city's responsibility. The city will obtain a matching grant from ADOT. If obtained, the city will pay the remaining amount from the Falcon Field Airport Enterprise Fund. Item 5K act on resolution approving and authorizing the city manager to enter into an antenna and rack space lease at Falcon Field Airport with the FAA for an automated service observing system in support of air traffic operations. Item 5L act on resolution approving and authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with Valley Metro Rail for funding the Fiesta Downtown Chandler Transit Corridor Study Alternatives Analysis to evaluate transit options between the Fiesta District and Downtown Chandler. Item 5M act on resolution approving and authorizing the city manager to enter into a transit services amendment to the Intergovernmental Agreement with the Regional Public Transportation Authority for fixed bus, dial-a-ride, and ride choice, and ADA plat and pass transit services. Regional funds and fair revenue will provide the majority of funding for the services. Item 5N act on resolution approving and authorizing the city manager to enter into a funding agreement with Valley Metro Rail Incorporated for the current light rail operations in the City of Mesa. Item 5O act on resolution approving and authorizing the city manager to enter into an intergovernmental agreement with Maricopa County concerning the annexation of Elliott Road from the Santan Freeway to Signal Butte Road and improvements to Elliott Road from Sossman Road to Signal Butte Road. Item 5Q act on resolution extinguishing a 10-foot utility easement for City of Mesa Natural Gas located at 1618 North Higley Road. Item 5R act on resolution approving and authorizing the sale of approximately 21,750 square feet of city-owned property located at 427 South Bellevue and authorizing the city manager to execute the necessary documents. Item 5S act on resolution approving and supporting the submittal of a grant application by AZ Men to the Ochkin Indian Community for the Project 25 Anti-Sex and Human Trafficking Program and authorizing the city manager to accept and administer subsequent awarded funds as a pass-through grant. And item 6A act on subdivision plat Encore at Eastmark, the 5,700 to 6,000 blocks of South Signal Butte Road, and the 10,500 to 10,800 blocks of East Williamsfield Road. This is located north of Williamsfield Road and west of Signal Butte Road. Mayor and Councilmembers, these are the items on the consent agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Christopher. Ms. Mickelson, do we have any additional blue card requests to speak on any item on the consent agenda? I do see someone stepping forward.
It's just a correction.
Thank you. This is on item 3F, is that correct? Okay. Thank you. We will remove item 3F from the consent agenda.
That would be very great.
That's fine. With that correction, there was a motion made by Mr. Glover, seconded by Mr. Freeman. Please cast your vote. Okay, the vote is five in favor and two members absent. We will now move to the items that were removed from the consent agenda. First item is item 3F. We do have a request to speak on this item. Before you do that, let me just remind everybody what it is we're talking about. 3F is a liquor license application for Streets of New York, is that correct?
Yes.
Yes. Please come forward and state your name, whether or not you're a resident of Mesa, and you'll have three minutes to speak.
My name is Teresa Morse, and I am not a resident of Mesa. However, I am the applicant on this particular license. I'm the agent. But I did notice that it states in the verbiage here that the license that is currently at the location, a Series 7 license, will revert to the state. And this is a transferable license, and that is not accurate. It will be sold to another individual. So I wanted to make that on record so that the verbiage, going back to the state, they understand that it will be sold, not reverting back to the state. And that is all I wanted to say.
Okay. Thank you very much. Mr. Smith, with that correction by the applicant, are we good to go to go ahead and vote on this, or do we need to renotice it or repost it or anything?
No. Mayor and Council, you can proceed with the vote. It's still on this particular license, the new Series 12.
Okay. So it's not critical information as to what the disposition of the existing license will be? Thank you. Thank you very much for being here and raising that.
If I can elaborate on that, the Series 12 is basically replacing the Series 7. So as soon as the Series 12 is approved by the city and by the state, then that license will go into effect, and then the Series 7 will be placed on inactive status, and it will be sold because that's a transferable type of license. Thank you.
Thank you. We're now going to hear from our city staff. Does this present any challenges or anything that would prevent?
Mayor and Council, she's correct. It's just strictly an error on our part, so we'll correct that, but everything she stated is correct.
Okay. Thank you. If there's no additional questions from council or discussion, is there a motion to approve agenda item 3F? Thank you, Mr. Freeman, and Mr. Glover has seconded it. Please cast your vote. Five in favor and two absent. Thank you for making that correction. The next item on our agenda that has been removed from the consent agenda is agenda item 5P. This is approving and authorizing the city manager to enter into a memorandum of understanding regarding the development of the Drew Street Service Parking Lot. Mr. McBay, I'm going to invite you forward just to give us a one or two, a very short paragraph description of what this is, just for the benefit of people that are watching this at home or that are in the room today. This is an item that we got a very detailed presentation on in our study session, so I don't think we need another, to do that over again, but just remind us very briefly what this proposal is.
Yes. Mayor, Council, I'll give you the 32nd elevator speech. This is a memorandum of understanding. It's an agreement to agree to more terms later on. It sets the high-level business terms for development agreement between the city and the developer of the project, which would be focused on the Drew Street Parking Lot, which is just to the south and west of the intersection of Center and Main Street. The agreement terms would allow the future development of a high-rise hotel, boutique hotel, 75-room minimum, and minimum 75 luxury apartments on the site. We will have many months of negotiations going forward, though.
Thank you, Mr. McBay. We have a request to speak on this item from Laurent Teichman. Laurent, please come forward. Thank you for being so involved in our downtown business district. We're looking forward to hearing your thoughts on this.
Thank you. Mayor Giles, member of the council, Mr. Brady, member of the staff. First, I would like to state that I'm not here to speak against a project. On the contrary, I have been downtown for over 30 years, and I've been waiting for a qualitative project like this. I saw past project of Mr. Sprague, and I'm very impressed, and I have a lot of respect for what he did. To be honest, I was disappointed by the lack of communication from the city, which I've always considered a key partner, and also by the developer while working on this project since it directly impacts my business and my two buildings. After a positive conversation with Wisconsin Man-Winkle, and it was so first book that I learned that they were moving forward with a project. After reading the post and expressing my concern, Jeff McVeigh and the developer, Mr. Sprague, who I met a few days ago, reassured me that they will work closely with me. I look forward to meeting Mr. Lyon, who I haven't had the pleasure to meet yet. The did-it parking spade that came with the purchase of my building and the great city parking for my patron were the reason I invested so much downtown. I want to make sure that the city and the builder will preserve this during and after construction. There is a huge bank parking lot next door, which is very little utilized. It is imperative that during construction, a deal be worked out between your team and them to create alternative parking. This is the only way we will survive this construction. Eventually, when the new parking will be built, we will need, there will be a need for pedestrian exit close to the back door as older client needs easy access. Furthermore, our back alley needs to be wide enough to make sure pedestrian and car can flow properly, and that the plaza effect will be as wide at the whole length of the project because this is the main entrance of our businesses. This is the more important since delivery cannot take place from the front due to moving traffic and light rail. I might one day want to build up on my property, so there are two enough space and setback might be left for that possibility. Tim assured me that the drawing presented today are just conceptual and that my loft apartment facing the back, and the back entrance will not face the back of the house I show on your drawing. Instead, there will be a landscaped space and a beautiful tall-glass lobby, which will be the access to the apartment side of the project. I still have many concerns, but it is my hope that I can trust that it will all be worked out. Communication is the key, and I need to know that my city has my back and that we all will work all closely together to achieve what we want, which is a successful and vibrant downtown. Thank you very much for listening.
Thank you, Laurent, and again, thank you for your very long and significant commitment. Laurent, La Studio is among several.
Yeah.
The question for Mr. Freeman is, what business do you operate in downtown Mesa?
I own La Studio Salon, and then I own different buildings, which I rent to Milano's and Tribello.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So you have several properties on Main Street in downtown Mesa?
Yeah. Yeah, we've been there for 35 years, so.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Council, any questions or discussion on this item? Okay, there has been a motion made by Mr. Glover and seconded by Mr. Luna. Please cast your vote. Thank you. It's five in favor and two absent. Thank you very much. The next item on our agenda is agenda item 7A. That is a resolution approving and authorizing the city manager to disperse fiscal year human service funds for activities by nonprofits approved by the City Council, and entered into an agreement for the dispersment of those funds. The issue that, a particular issue on this long list of funds that prompted the questions regarding this has to do with allocating some city funds to be matched by a larger amount of philanthropic dollars for a pilot education readiness program in our city. And this issue was studied in great depth by a wonderful blue-ribbon panel that issued a report. That panel was chaired by our vice mayor, Mr. Luna, who also happens to be a very experienced educator. We appreciate the good work that he and his committee have put into this issue. So, Mr. Luna, if you don't mind, why don't we begin by having you tell us a little bit about, if you wouldn't mind, that report and what the recommendations or conclusions of that report were.
Thank you, Mayor. For the viewing audience, if you're interested in a look in the report, it can be found on mesaaZ.gov. There's a search, and you can type in early childhood education task force. And so what I'm going to do today, if they want to put the first graphic, is just give you just a summary of what we found as a task force. So the Early Childhood Education Task Force was comprised of qualified experts and community leaders representing education, business, nonprofits, and government. Its charge was clear: examine the state of early learning in Mesa to develop concrete progressive actions to propel our community forward, to serve our children's needs, and to ensure that these children have every opportunity to be ready to enter kindergarten, succeed in school, and become college and career-ready. For Mesa to continue to be a sustainable and successful city, the community must make it its duty to ensure that every child in Mesa has every opportunity to succeed academically and to become part of our talented workforce. Workforce development is essential, and it starts with our children. The evidence is clear: 99% of critical brain development, 90% of critical brain development occurs before the age 5. Quality early learning experiences for children ages 3 to 5 increases school readiness, which leads to career readiness. Every dollar invested in early learning yields a $16 return to the community with strong positive effects on kindergarten readiness, language, math, and social skills, K-12 test scores, high school graduation, and college enrollment. The competitiveness of small, medium, and large companies depends on having a pipeline of talented, educated employees with the skills needed in today's economy. Today, only 36% of Mesa 3- and 4-year-olds are enrolled in early care and education compared to 48% nationally. Allocating resources to support the health and learning of our young children is critical economic development strategy that benefits the entire city. The total cost, capital, personnel, training, and special education services, supplies, and administration to provide early education services by institutions in Mesa is approximately between $35,000 to $4,000 per child for half-day program and approximately $7,000 per child for full-day program. Because the state of Arizona provides no additional resources for early learning, new funding resources must be identified and obtained. Example resources include, but are not limited to, reprioritizing existing resources, seeking federal and state grants, advocating for new funding for pre-K and full-day kindergarten at state and federal levels, and receiving corporate and education philanthropic gifts. In order to have the greatest long-term impact on developing and keeping an educated workforce that leads to greater economic development, Mesa needs to place a high priority on the entire education continuum by offering quality early learning opportunities, building upon the high-quality K-12 system, and continuing to promote higher education opportunities. Mesa is fortunate to have an outstanding K-12 schools, and the City of Mesa has worked hard to advance higher educational options. There is an immediate need to add to a complementary piece to existing strategies to help Mesa's families with children under 5 years old access existing and new affordable, quality early learning opportunities. There is an opportunity for City of Mesa to be a champion in pursuing innovative, community-owned solutions. The need for ample early education options for the children of Mesa ages 0 to 5 demonstrates the needs of families living in poverty who have the least and the fewest resources. It is imperative that the city is aware and be prepared to mobilize resources and to leverage partnerships to meet the needs of our most vulnerable residents. While the task force appreciates the city's recent leadership in providing the political lift to this urgent community workforce development, there still remains a challenge. As you will remember, that they respectfully mentioned to us that there's much more to do, and it would require a political commitment and foresight to make sure this happens. This is not a short-term fix, as outlined in the report. There are actions that the community can and should pursue in order to create an immediate impact. However, to make a long-term, sustainable difference, the task force believed and recommended that the city dedicate staff whose job is focused on this initiative, as well as identify clear, ongoing, significant resources to fill the gaps and to respond to this need. There are 31,238 children under 5 today in Mesa who are counting on bold and decisive actions. So I would urge you to read the report again. It's found on mesaaZ.gov under Early Childhood Education Task Force for more information. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Luna. Thank you for your leadership on this issue and for chairing that task force. I'll join with the vice mayor in urging the community to read this report. It's a wonderful report. It does a masterful job of summarizing where we're at as a community on this issue and makes some great recommendations for next steps on this. So I will put a link to this report on my social media pages and again invite you to please learn more about this. Some of the recommendations from this report are for the, what role does the city play in this? Well, we're encouraged to leverage and expand existing assets, so that's what we're considering doing today. We're also asked, urged by this report to be a champion on this issue and to shine a spotlight on it and to provide political encouragement and leadership, and so that's what we're doing. But frankly, the action that we're taking tonight is somewhat symbolic because for $60,000, you really can't do anything. What this $60,000 is, though, is a little bit of city skin in the game so that those of us who want to see this happen will have, can check that box when we're out soliciting more significant contributions from the philanthropic community for a one- and two-year pilot program. So it is, it's not, this is not enough money to do anything other than to demonstrate the city's leadership and good faith on this issue. The source of these funds will be from our ABC Utility Philanthropic Program, where you have the opportunity, when you pay your city utility bill, to make a contribution to those in the community who need help. One of the specific causes and purposes in that contribution is educational enrichment programs. So this is very consistent with what we advertise in terms of soliciting those contributions. We are not hiring any city, we are not creating a City of Mesa Education Department. We are not going to administer this program. We will do it in partnership with a nonprofit. Either the Mesa Education Foundation or a similar organization will be the organization that handles the finances. No one will be writing checks to the City of Mesa, and there'll be no additional staff incurred in this. So again, this is frankly just us providing some leadership and some encouragement and setting an example to hopefully make some great first steps here. People are probably tired of me talking about, talking period, but people are probably tired of me talking about my idea of what the Mesa brand is and how the Mesa brand is identified with education. But I think that it's important that if we're going to preserve that brand and the idea that this is a great place, we have a strong workforce, this is where we can be attractive to those. to those who are bringing businesses, we need to distinguish ourselves on this topic. So, as Mr. Luna said, this is not a short-term solvable situation. But unless we start making steps in that direction, we're going to just continue to go in the wrong direction. We do have several requests to speak. And so, if you don't mind, council, what we'll do is we'll hear from these folks and then we'll open it up for council discussion and consideration on this agenda item. First, we have Mike Hutchinson. Or Elaine, do you need to leave? Oh, you're bringing a blue card up. Okay, thank you very much. We'll just go in the order that I would receive them. Mr. Hutchinson, please come forward. I would ask you to please just identify yourself and whether or not you're a resident of Mesa. Mike?
Mike Hutchinson, 4042 East Hope Street, Mesa. I'm pleased to be here tonight to talk about early childhood education, which I didn't know a lot about until I got appointed this really fun committee that Dave Luna chaired, and we talked about this issue. And like most things in life, it's a lot more complicated when you start talking about it. But what was compelling to me was the need in this community. And I think our city staff did, as usual, a great job providing information to the committee. We toured San Antonio and looked at what they were doing down there. Really instructive to go down there and find out what efforts they're taking in that one community. We did the research. So, I am a supporter of this report. I'm very pleased what the city staff and the council has done so far to try to move the project forward. I was going to say, keep talking, Mayor, keep talking. It's good. Because we've got to have advocates for this. Because this is a little risky moving forward if you think about the future. But one thing that was great about, I worked for the city for twenty-eight years. It was great to work here because this, our councils, I worked for a lot of different councils and mayors, and the city staff were challenged to take risks, to do new things. And this would be a new thing for the city to get, to have a significant role in this. But one I think we ought to carefully look at, and I'll just, we've taken some risks over the years as a city. You know, we, there was a need for a community center, and somebody stood up and said, we need to build one of that. Wayne Palmer took a risk, and we moved forward. There was a time in this community where we didn't have services for child, kids in crisis, and some community folks said, three strong-minded ladies from the Monocle Club came in and said, we ought to have this in our community. And some people were reluctant and said, maybe that's, you know, we shouldn't be doing that. But we did. Herb Osman, a great minister, came in and said, we need to have a shelter for families that are in danger. And there was lots of conversation and lots of discussion, and we did it. And the list goes on. We bought a water farm that was controversial. We annexed this Air Force base, and some people said, why are we, what are we doing that for? We didn't know what the future was going to hold, but it's turned out pretty good. We built a number of Cub facilities, one, two, and then Chris built the great one that we now have, a great thing for our community. Risky stuff, everyone didn't agree with it. So, I know there's lots of conversation, we're going to do some research. I'm happy to help in terms of some of the research and volunteer my time to help talk to philanthropic groups in the community. But I just, my encouragement, and I know you have a hard, a very hard job as the city council. I was going to say, Councilmember Mark, we annexed Lehigh, and I think the jury's still out on that risk. But...
They've all died.
This community's a great community. We need to do things like this program to help young folks get training and education, have that step up. They need help, and we ought to provide that. And so, as I say, I'm encouraged by where we are today. Keep up the good work. I hope we can move together. There's lots of partners behind us in the community doing great things to make Mesa even better. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Michael Cowan, Dr. Cowan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Dr. Luna, Vice Mayor, and city council members, Mr. Brady and staff members. Thank you for the opportunity to share a couple of comments with you. I just want you to know how much we appreciate the city considering this at this time. Let me share and debunk a myth, and the myth is this. Well, Dr. Cowan, as the superintendent of Mesa Public Schools, you receive funding for education of children in our community. And the answer to that is yes. However, the answer to that is also limited to kindergarten through twelfth-grade students. We do receive some funding for early childhood children, but only children who are identified with special education needs so that they receive special services. We don't receive, and nor can I use, our very limited maintenance and operation funds for any early childhood education programming. So, the limited programming we do provide comes through grants, comes through scholarships, comes through other things. But unfortunately, it's just not sufficient. If you think about your early childhood life, you most likely came from an enriched environment, an environment where parents provided you with experiences and encounters and opportunities to explore and learn about your world, to learn your alphabet, to learn your colors, to learn how to tie a shoe, to learn how to interact and associate with peers your own age through playgroups and playground experiences. Unfortunately, those dynamics are not consistent across our community, and we have a substantially growing population who are dramatically influenced by the power and influence of poverty in their lives, and it manifests itself in our schools. And let me give you an example. I was visiting with the principal on, at one of our schools on Broadway Road, and she came to me and she said, Dr. Cowan, as you know, we administer an assessment every beginning of the school year called the Dynamic Indicators of Basic Early Literacy. This is a test to determine school readiness relative to basic literary skills. She said, here's my problem. Many, many, many of my kids, who are measured on a scale of their readiness for school, are scoring below the bottom of that scale. There isn't even a score I can start them on. And that becomes very problematic, especially when you consider a population of students who are not prepared for schooling and a population of kids who are prepared for schooling. Mesa Public Schools works really hard to ensure that these children all progress at accelerated levels. Unfortunately, many times that gap continues to exist as the influences of poverty play a part in their lives. As I look down the road and as an educator of over thirty years, having started at Lehigh Elementary School way back when, we've seen a lot of changes, both demographically in our schools, educationally in our schools. We've seen economic differences occur in education. And as you consider early childhood education, I see that as a critical and important economic engine for our community. As we prepare children in early stages of learning, our most at-risk children, we allow them to take a U-turn in their life so that they're better prepared for kindergarten, first, second, third, fourth, twelfth grade, and then on to college and career afterwards. For us to be able to sustain and support an increasing population of students who are influenced by the power of poverty, we commend you for considering this and recognize that this is just a small portion of what's really needed. But the exploration, the conversation, and the launch of an exploratory or a pilot kind of opportunity is going to be beneficial for our kids as we seek philanthropic dollars and other opportunities to expand it for those kids that are most in need, that we want and should provide the opportunities for them to be meaningful members of society. We thank you so much for considering that. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Cowan, and thank you for all that you do for our community and your role as the superintendent.
Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, it's great to be with you. Mr. Councilmen, Mary Dee, all you guys, we're glad to be here with you. Thank you for giving us this opportunity to talk in behalf of this small, even if it is symbolic, token of what we're all about. I appreciate what Mike and Mike have both said. They encapsulate, I think, the basis for what we're all about. I would like to address several facets of this. First, from the legislative standpoint, watching what happens with education, I don't think anytime soon a legislature is going to change their minds and decide to throw a lot of money at early childhood education or education at all. And we can talk about it all day long, but very seldom does much get done. The problem is that there are too many kids, as Dr. Cowan so aptly stated, that are living in poverty. And the effects of that poverty creates what we call an achievement gap. Some people call it the poverty gap. It's really one and the same. That poverty gap begins when a child is born, and it continues to get larger and larger and larger with each passing day unless there's some very, very keen intervention. When a child enters kindergarten, the typically, children in poverty, children in homelessness and so forth, have a huge gap. And despite the Herculean efforts by so many in education, that gap seldom ever closes. In fact, just the opposite happens more times than not. That gap gets larger and larger so that by the time they're sixth grade, they're sometimes three to four years behind in grade levels, reading and math. The effort required to reform or to re-educate a child with things that they could have learned at two or three years old when they were in those formative years is very costly. It's kind of like the whole idea with prisons. We can educate now or incarcerate later. The cost of incarceration is much more expensive and much more deadly on our society. If we invest dollars when children are young, which, as Mike Hutchinson stated, is a very, very good investment, it's different than anything we've ever done, cities typically don't get involved in educational matters. But why not Mesa? Why don't we become the city that leads in education, that creates a place where we value that education and we show it with our influence, with our dollars, with everything that we have to make sure that we are giving those kids the opportunity to be productive citizens, to contribute to the republic, and be able to avoid all too often what happens with students who are in this achievement gap or poverty gap. We spend a lot of time trying to reform their behaviors, trying to reform their learning skills, so that they don't learn what they need to do. So, now they're out on the streets, and now what do they resort to? They resort to crime, which is going to cost us a whole lot more money in the long run. I implore this group to do whatever they can. I appreciate the efforts that have been done so far with Vice Mayor Luna and his committee. There's so much more that needs to be done, and any effort we can take now to ensure our students get the education they need to make themselves great and to make Mesa great again, I think is a very, very good policy. Thank you all for your time, and thank you for considering this important matter.
Thank you, Mr. Lewis.
Hello, my name is Michael Hughes. I am a resident of Mesa, 1725 East Brown Road. I come tonight also in support of this, and I believe I come from a very unique perspective. I had the distinct honor of serving twenty years on the Mesa School Board. And my history in that was the, one of the proudest things I can recall is the relationship the city always had with the schools and the city's reputation of being so pro-education. I believe it's critical that you support this. The message could be very devastating if we, as a city, do not, and that worries me. The other thing that I would like to share with you is, in a sense, I win the people I serve either way because education has been so important. But I am the CEO of A New Leaf, and last year we served over twenty thousand people. And I know that the council is very supportive of all of the programs that the nonprofits run in this community. But I am asking you to please put education first because I can tell you, from the twenty thousand people that we helped last year, a major theme that they struggled with throughout was their lack of education. And if we don't start early, we're going to be behind the eight ball. So, I urge us to do this as a city and supporting the education. You supported the Educational Access Center. It's incredibly successful, and I ask you to support this also tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hughes.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members. My name is Tori Taj, and I'm a resident of Gilbert, Arizona. And I am here to represent Child Crisis Arizona this evening and the low-income children here in Mesa and throughout Maricopa County. What I'd like to ask you to do is continue to look at serving children in pre-K. We've started to do that at Child Crisis Arizona, and I wanted to share some statistics that I use often and I felt that you might like to hear. An investment in early childhood education can return as much as $7 for every $1 invested. That was from a study done in 2013, Yoshikawa et al. Another thing that's really important to think about, this last year, the federal government has decided, and our zip code right here at Child Crisis Arizona, they wanted to invest in early Head Start program. We're running it right now because they realized and recognized how the population is growing, especially those low-income children. Mesa has experienced over five years a 200% increase in the number of children living in poverty. This is the largest city-level rate increase in the nation. I want to repeat that. The federal government recognized this, and we obtained an early Head Start grant to help the children of Mesa. Mesa experienced over five years a 200% increase in the number of children living in poverty. This was done by a very famous foundation, it's the Annie E. Casey Foundation. So, it's really imperative that the city look at this issue, and I really appreciate how the city of Mesa is taking this very seriously. Early education is very important. At Child Crisis Arizona, we're going to continue to fight for those children, especially the low-income in our community, because we know that they especially benefit from early childhood education. So, I thank you for this opportunity. I thank you for your investment in human services and the children of Mesa.
Thank you, Tori, and thank you for all that Child Crisis does in our community.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. My name's Deanna Villanueva-Sausedo, lifelong Mesa resident, 1513 South Gate Circle. So, as someone with multiple decades of involvement both in education and in our community, spent over a decade working in community outreach for the city before moving on to education, want to express my support for 7A, all the wonderful nonprofits that will be supported with this initiative. As the board chair for A New Leaf, obviously that's near and dear to my heart, and so you're supporting lots of good causes. Education needs to be added to that mix. We have a number of startling statistics. We, as so eloquently has been stated already, we have a growth in poverty, we have growth in families that are at risk and need additional services. It is the role of city government to foster economic development and sustainability for our community. You can look at NLC's own website, National League of Cities, that many of you are involved with, you chair committees for National League of Cities. They clearly articulate the need for educated councils to lead the way in terms of economic development and community sustainability. Education is key to that. If we don't lay a foundation for our earliest learners, we will, as a community, suffer from a lack of a quality, educated workforce. As a lifelong resident, as a mother, as someone with family members here in Mesa, I want my nieces, nephews, my own son, shout out, to be able to find work with high-paying wages and stay in our community and remain proud Mesa residents. I want to continue to be a proud Mesa resident. I want to be able to say to other communities out there who sometimes look at us a little bit differently, unfortunately, we haven't always had the best press here in Mesa. I want to be able to proudly say that we're taking the lead on this issue. We care about our economic development, we care about our workforce, we care about what we are creating for a sustainable community. I want to be able to share that with folks who may have a different impression of what Mesa is. So, I urge you to, again, support this initiative, support your stance on education, making sure that we are providing quality economic development, quality workforce, and quality education for our earliest learners. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Deanna. Thanks for all the great hats you wear in our community. Appreciate it.
Familiar face, welcome back to you. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council. I come to you today as, been an educator at Mesa Community College for over twenty years, and for most of you know me, I am the recently retired police chief here in this great city and served the Mesa Police Department in our community for over thirty years in that capacity. I want to thank you, first of all, for considering helping to support early childhood education in Mesa. And as a police officer for over thirty years, you have to ask yourself, is there a correlation between education and crime? And there absolutely is. There has always been partnership with the Police Department and our Mesa Public Schools, everything from Dare to Great to School Resource Officers to the Red Ribbon Campaign. It goes on and on, and I've really worked along those programs my whole career. And if somebody asks me, is there a correlation between education and crime? Absolutely. Research shows that you look at dropout rates, how they're related to crime, truancy, how that relates to crime. This is our opportunity to utilize $60,000 of ABC funding, which is given to you for the responsibility to put into social services, to put that and make that investment in our children, in our education. This funding is an investment in the way I see it. If you ask a police officer out there when they're... If you ask a police officer out there, when they're dealing with criminals, if you ask them, what would it change this criminal's life? And it probably would have been something way, way early. It's not about rehabilitating on the scene. It's about making that change at an early, early time in their lives. Help them with the education, not only, we're talking about being high-profile to get good jobs, I'm talking about good decision-making. Education equals good decision-making. Bad decision-making has a relation to crime. So I'm asking for a look at, look at this holistically. Look at this from a ability to have a safe and healthy community. Education is such a big piece of that puzzle of having a healthy and safe community. I commend the work, the Education Task Force, and it was chaired by Vice Mayor Luna, all the work that she have done, and I fully support funding for early childhood education. And as the former chief of police, I ask that you consider this as an investment in our children, at those individuals that may be disadvantaged, and to look at it and aspect of making a healthy and safe community. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Chief. Good to see you. Claudia Walters.
Claudia Walters, I've lived in Mesa for almost 33 years. Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, it's very nice to be here this evening. My council member, Mark Freeman, when you get a chance, you ought to ask Dr. Cowan about the time that the bull trapped him in the portable classroom at Lehigh with his kids, and they couldn't get out, because it's a good story. You're probably looking at me and thinking, oh, I know what she's going to talk about. She's a former school board member and board chair at Children's Action Alliance, so I know where she's going, and you'd probably be wrong. I want to talk about something that I felt passionately about the entire time I served on the city council, and that's community and economic development and infrastructure improvement. Years ago, I got a call from a reporter who said to me, what is wrong with your airport out there? He said Williams Gateway, but you know, you know which one that is. He said, what is wrong with you people? Why isn't that going where it needs to go? I said, it is going where it needs to go. I said, until you have the infrastructure in place, you aren't going to get the development that we want, but we are working on building that infrastructure, and it only takes 20 to 25 years to have overnight success. So then he said to me, no, no, what's really the reason that it hasn't developed yet? And I said to him, it has to do with streets and roads and things like that. And he wouldn't believe me, but look what's going on out there. And what I would say to you is that we have put the wrong title on this. We keep putting the title of education on this. Yeah, I love education, but rip that off. This is about infrastructure. This is infrastructure improvement, and if you want to have good jobs in your community 20 and 30 years down the road, you need to invest in the infrastructure today, and that infrastructure is human infrastructure. I recognize that this isn't enough money to make a difference in terms of the overall thing, but to go out and ask, as somebody who used to work in the nonprofit arena, I can tell you, people want to know when you come and ask for money, do you have any skin in the game? Why are you here asking me when you're not even willing to put a few dollars in yourself? That's what this is about. It's about the future. It's about having overnight success in 20 to 25 years. Thank you for considering this. I think it's important for the future of our community, but please relabel it. Thank you.
Thank you, Claudia. Elaine Miner.
Thank you, Mayor Giles, Vice Mayor Luna, council members, Chris, for your, all your work and dedication to our city, and thank you so much for doing this, for getting a committee, for gathering the information you have gathered. It is a very particularly important issue for me. I've been in Mesa a little over 30 years now. I came to Mesa originally for the schools. I lived in the Scottsdale area, and I knew I wanted to raise my children here because your schools are famous for what they do for kids. And I want, as much as I appreciate everything that everyone has said, and every bit of it is good, it's true, it's honest, and it's from different perspectives, I want to add the perspective of a mother and a grandmother. Those statistics are easy to prove, and all you have to do is walk into the classroom of any one of those schools that we are talking about, the one that Dr. Cowan mentioned on Broadway, and sit in the classroom and study what those children look like, act like, and are doing in classroom. And you will see, within a few times of all the different demographics that you visit, what happens to a child that comes into the classroom day one disadvantaged. You will watch their morale, their self-esteem, all of the things that they have as value and worth continue to decline. And the more that that declines, and the more unsure they are themselves, the more they do become a situation of, as mentioned by the former chief of police, of crime, of drug addiction. My son works for Community Bridges in this area, and there is a strong correlation to not doing well in school and drug addiction. And as a mother, I am representing those voices of children who can't be heard any other way but through us. So I appreciate all you're doing, and I encourage you to continue. And what Claudia said is absolutely right. People are more willing to give and to support when they know that all people are willing to do that, including the city, and that you're invested as well, and it's part of a community service that we provide from the bottom up, and that is our children. I appreciate, again, what you have done and all the time you've spent. And if you need someone else to help, I'm here. As you know, I've been on the school board a long, long time, and I've been involved in education, and I'm always glad to help in any way I can. Again, thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Miner. Thank you for your service on the school board. Do we have an additional card on this topic, on this item? Okay. Thank you. Estevan, and I'm sorry, Estevan, Tamara, excuse me.
Samora.
Oh, Samora. I know the Samora family. Estevan, please come forward.
Good evening, councilman. I am Estevan Samora. I am Ms. Deanna Villanueva-Sausedo's son. I am a 20-year member of Mesa, and I'm supporting this, I don't know how you'd say this, but this program. Reason being is that going through the entire Mesa Public School System, K through 12, I, first at hand, can see the benefits of early program, of early childhood development coming from that, from a nurturing perspective like my mother. She helped out me incredibly, getting a new job, working for Apple substantially, and pardon me, a little bit nervous. But seeing a lot of my early childhood friends who lived in poverty, did not speak English as their first language, ESL, a lot of that programming, I see them now, either back in Mexico or unfortunately in crime, and are living in poverty. So I strongly suggest that please support this as much as you can, coming from a perspective that grew up with a lot of those children who do not have early childhood development. Thank you.
Thank you, Estevan. Any other requests to speak, Ms. Mickelson?
No, I didn't.
Okay, thank you. Council, any discussion on this topic prior to a motion? Mr. Freeman?
Mayor, I feel like I need to speak after Lehigh's been brought up quite a bit there. You know, Lehigh's very happy with Mesa, so it's a great marriage. You know, Mesa, being, as well as myself, worked for Mesa Fire, we've always been a leader in everything we've done. We've thought out of the box, we've done pilot programs, we've done things that otherwise have been controversial in our city, but we found that they have worked. One of the things that I've been thinking about, I've been dwelling on this for quite a while, since the mayor brought this up, and I've also been able to discuss it with other school board members, it got their perspective. As you know, I've kind of got back into farming, our family's in a farming enterprise system, but years ago, I planted some seed that, it was cotton seed. So we grew just about one acre of seed, and we grew it right here at Center Brown, and we grew up to maturity and we harvested it, and then it was cleaned and was sent to Argentina, and it was grown again. And after the end of the Argentina season, there was enough seed to supply the American cotton growers here in America. So in just one growing season in one year, that seed extrapolated into many more seeds, and therefore, we were able to plant that certain variety in cotton in America. So with that said, I've been thinking about this. One thing that sold it for me is when my granddaughter said, grandpa, and this was yesterday, I can tie my shoe, she's four years old, and she tied it in like five seconds because she learned it at school. And I thought, all those seeds, if we plant these seeds and these young kids are the seeds that I'm talking about, and if we can extrapolate that into many more successes, I think that's very important. You know, there's always a risk, Mr. Hutchinson brings up the risk of any program, but I think we have the foresight and the strength within our community and our leadership to know if the program's working or not. My goal would be is to develop this, harvest it, and then hopefully turn it over with a great action plan to a nonprofit or some other organization to run it effectively, because, you know, as a city, we have a lot of fires burning at this time. Not literally, but we do have some fires burning, so with that, I am, you know, we advocate higher education, and we're very involved in higher education with the universes we have downtown, and I'm supportive of them. And so with that, I'm also supportive of this program as well. So thank you for everybody who's spoken tonight and their great friends. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Freeman. Any other discussion? Would someone like to make a motion?
Maybe I'll make the motion.
Thank you. Mr. Freeman has made a motion, seconded by Mr. Luna. Please cast your vote. Thank you. It is five in favor and two absent. Thank you for everyone who came and spoke. We appreciate the great community engagement on this topic. The last item on our agenda is items from Citizens Present. Ms. Mickelson, I do have one card. Do you have any others?
No, that's the only one.
Okay. Thank you. I invite forward Andrea Garcia. Andrea, welcome. If you could please just let us know if you're a resident of Mesa, state your name, and you'll have three minutes to speak.
I am a resident of Mesa. I live at 928 West Ola Avenue. I came last month. I would like to directly address Mr. Brady. My understanding is that during the Citizens' address, you are not allowed to respond to me, but that if I respond directly to someone, that they are able to respond?
I'm not sure that's accurate. Whatever the topic is you're going to raise, it's not on our agenda, so we can't take action on it. Mr. Smith can give you maybe a better description, but please tell us what you want to hear.
I just would like, I came last month when we had been called as private medics, and again, I am coming not on behalf of the company that I work for, but it's just a burning fire in me, no pun intended, that we really do need to hear an apology for calling us Uber drivers. Sorry. And I represent, you know, a group of people. I know it wasn't meant in slander, I know it wasn't meant that way, but I'm on the back pages of all of our social media, and it's still something that isn't sitting right with us. And to work into the community, it would just be a good token gesture on behalf of Mr. Brady to maybe re-clarify what he meant when he's made that statement. And that would be it. And then my other comment was on the current Mesa Police situation that happened where Jason was, the video on social media shows that a Mesa Police Officer went excessively forced, and they had some rallies on behalf of that. And it got me to thinking that we have to not ever try people in the court of public opinion. I had a lot of activists call me, and people were outraged, you know, the Mesa Police Department went overboard, and this guy needs to be fired, he needs to be suspended. But we're going based on a video. So I defended city of Mesa, and I defended rule of law, which I feel is important. I think that we have to stop trying people in the court of public opinion, and I think that to put in our flag, so to speak, as my activist flag for many marches and things I've led, I did not participate in that march because I felt like it wasn't fair without all the facts. So I'm here to support the city of Mesa and their decisions and ask you guys that, before you take any action on any officer or any, you know, member of the public gets outraged by something, that all the facts be taken into consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Garcia.
Two different topics, sorry.
That's okay. Thanks for your service as a paramedic in our community.
Thank you.
That concludes the agenda items on our, for this meeting. Is there a motion to adjourn? Thank you, Mr. Luna, and a second. Thank you, Mr. Freeman. All in favor, please say aye. Aye, we are adjourned.